March meeting of the Winona County Planning Commission to order. We'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Kelly moves and Mark seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda as written, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The agenda is passed. Okay, has everybody had a chance to look over the February minutes? Are there any comments, questions?
I move to accept the minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Arlie, Cherie moves and Arlie second. Approval of the minutes. All those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The minutes are passed as written. Okay, we go into the petitions. Docket number PC 321-19-01. To consider the petition of Don Ritter of 26717 County Road 25, Lewiston, Minnesota, in regards to the following interim use permit request. Blake.
Thank you, yeah, so they're looking at adding an additional manufactured home to the property for part-time farm help for their son Cory. There's just some of the background on CUP, IUP stuff that was adopted and stuff we had last month, but, so they're just north of Wyattville here off of County Road 25 and the new manufactured home would kind of be, but I think they showed about 140 feet off the road, so it meets all the requirements of the ordinance, but, kind of, I don't know, it's pretty basic. Here's a kind of a video showing where we'll be looking at, so kind of facing there right to the west, looking at about where the site would be, and then I'll just rotate around here to the north and you'll see really no neighboring dwellings extremely close. There's the petitioner's house and then back to where the new proposed trailer would be located. And then just the photo of that same site. And at this time, we haven't heard any objections from neighbors or had any calls on it and we received a letter of support from Warren Township. Any questions? Thank you.
Are there any questions for Blake?
I understand there was a trailer there in the past?
Um, yeah, but I, I don't know if it was an approved one, because I dug through all of our records and I never found a record of a conditional use permit for the site, so that's kind of where we're coming back to this and going to get it approved the right way this time from the beginning, because I did dig through their file and through our on-base and everything we had in there and I couldn't find any record of where that would have been permitted. Now they're very well made and the petitioner did mention that when they came and I tried looking through and if there would have been a foundation there, then there would have been a route where they wouldn't have needed the conditional use permit, but being that it was kind of a tarped over ag area with no remnants and no record of it being permitted, we kind of went back to square one and...
And...
That would have been in the timeframe when Warren Township did their own zoning.
Right, and some of those records did come over and we have a lot of those scanned in, you know, so a lot of that information was transferred, maybe this was a file that was just missed, I don't deny that that could be the case, but we don't have it here, so...
All right.
So they will be putting it in a septic system?
Yep.
It is there, isn't it?
That'd be a good question for the property, and it was completely covered in snow when I was there, so I didn't really get a chance to poke around too much. Regardless whether that septic would meet code, would be, I mean, they can absolutely get an inspection and we'd go from there if it passed inspection, they could definitely use it. If it doesn't pass inspection, then we'd be permitting a new septic.
Well, I've driven by it many, many times and, you know, the water, the septic and the electricity are all there, just as they were when the first trailer was there, so yeah, I think all they need to do is get an inspection.
Do you know when that was last lived in?
When did you guys move out?
Approximately 12 years ago.
Okay. And when, when was it put there originally?
Approximately 2000?
Yeah, I guess, do you know if Warren was still doing the zoning there then? Eric would know Warren was, okay. Yeah, so I mean, that might be even a more recent one, but like I said, that record never came over to us and...
It hasn't been inspected though, yes or no?
Uh, and yeah, none of the inspection files, so if Warren was doing it themselves, then we didn't have an inspection for the septic that was there at our office now.
I mean, no, no, it hasn't been...
No, nope, there hasn't been an inspection of the existing septic, which would be kind of step one anyway.
Cherie.
And so there's a well there for this dwelling?
I believe it was a shared well.
It didn't, it didn't say in here. It mentioned, you know, a septic, but not a well, so I wondered.
Yep, I believe it was a shared well, a lot of these, yep.
Thank you.
Any other question? Thanks Blake.
Thank you.
Does someone representing Donnie Ritter want to speak at this time? Okay. Uh, let's see. We need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Kelly moves.
Second.
Patrick seconds. All those in favor of opening the public hearing for docket number PC 3-21-19-01, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the proposal, please step forward, state your name and address and say what you have to say. For the second time, anyone wishing to speak on the docket number one, please step forward, state your name and address and state your piece. For the third and final time, anyone wishing to speak on docket number PC 3-21-19-01, please step forward, state your name and address and say what you have to say. Well, we must all be mutes. All right, Steve moved to close the public hearing. Mark seconded it. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of closing the public hearing for docket number PC 321-19-01, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The public hearing is unanimously closed. Okay, we need discussion or going into the findings of facts or and conditions. Well, don't everybody speak at once.
I have a question on one of the conditions.
Okay, Mark.
Number three, petitioner scheduling electrical inspection by the Minnesota State Building Code official for the manufactured home. I, I'm wondering why, I, I don't understand if they're bringing a new home and why would they have to have someone from the...
I don't believe it's a new home, but it's just a different home?
Okay, different one, but so, then that's...
Don't ask me. Counsel?
Why, why is it in there is the question I have.
It's required, whether we put that condition or not, essentially if you're going to wire another dwelling unit, it does have to be signed up by a master electrician.
But this would have been pre-wired prior to, I mean, if it's, if it's a mobile home, it's already done. I mean, I understand if they were building one or, you know, and I understand that, I just don't understand because obviously this passed some kind of inspection when it was made.
Yeah, just to make sure that the connection meets, meets code.
Okay.
Any other questions on the findings of fact or the condition? Arlie.
I guess I got a question is, do they have to have that septic system inspected before they come to their next meeting? Commissioner? Commissioners meeting?
I don't think, I don't know, counsel?
You know, because they could get the CUP.
Or Blake, somebody!
Yeah, no, typically we wouldn't require it before it went to the county board, we would just require that inspection before we approve the development certificate to move the new structure onto the property. So they wouldn't get their permit to actually put the structure on the property and live in it until we had some record of the septic either being good or a new septic being put in.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other question on any of the aforementioned topics?
Well, I'd like to make a motion then. I found the findings developed by, and analysis developed by staff sufficient to support that we rec, and the conditions sufficient to support recommending approval to the county board.
I'll second that.
Okay, Kelly moves to recommend approval and Mark seconded it.
And just to clarify this with both the proposed findings and conditions as?
Yes.
Okay, is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor of docket number PC 321-19-01 and the findings of fact and the conditions be recommended to the county board for approval? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It's passed, so now you understand the next thing is you have to wait for the county commissioners to, in one of their regularly scheduled meetings, to approve our recommendation or deny it. All we do is give them advice. They make the final decision. Okay.
Mr. Chair, that would be the April 9th meeting at 9:00 a.m. in these board chambers.
But that doesn't mean, that doesn't have to be on the, that can be consent business too, correct? So then...
Can we put it forth that way in general?
Yeah, probably since there was not a lot of heated argument here, I would imagine that it would go through as consent business. Understand? Okay, thank you. All right, let's go on to docket number two, to consider the petition of Dwayne and Cindy Herbert of 19901 County Road 114, Rolling Stone, to allow a community solar garden pursuant to chapter 12.3 of the Winona County zoning ordinance. Staff, who's got this one? Okay, start out.
Gene?
Yeah.
I'd just like to be known that I am related to the petitioner, if there's a problem.
Okay, okay. Does everybody on the planning commission understand what he just said? Okay, Herbert is a Herbert.
Does that, just a question on that, does that mean you're recusing yourself or not?
Not if there, if there's a problem, I can, but...
Well, yeah.
I don't have a problem.
Do you have a financial interest?
Rest of the planning commission can state if, if, is it a majority of them state that they...
Unless he wants to.
Okay, so...
The only way that it would work is if, if he feels like there would be an issue, he would step back, otherwise just disclose it and if a majority feels that way, then it would be a vote.
Now, does anyone want to hit Arlie for any reason?
No, Arlie has stated clearly he has no financial interest in this, so there's no, there's no conflict.
I've been trying to, but it, they're not giving. No, thank you.
Okay, go ahead Lou.
Okay, this is a petition for a solar garden and the first thing I want to address is this did not get to the Norton Township on time and one of the contingency plans is that it needs to be done before the county board and that's at 8:15 at 9 o'clock. We also have the town chairman from Norton here to, if there's any questions about that and it's up to you as the commission to decide if we want to go on with this, but they did not meet the deadline for the Norton Township. Yes?
A little late on this, I'm chairman of Rolling Stone Township and for some reason it was sent to Rolling Stone Township and I think we sent it back, we never did any comment, I think they sent it back anyway because we'd said we had no idea why they even sent it to us, so I think they sent it to the wrong township to begin with.
Okay.
So I think that might have been part of the confusion.
Okay.
Kay?
Mr. Chair, the petitioners did make a good faith effort to contact the Planning and Environmental Services Department to state that there was a mix-up between the annual meeting and the actual meeting.
The town board, monthly meeting?
The working meeting, in fact.
Yeah.
And the petitioners, and, and the firm involved, such a representative, and so there was a mix-up, they were very clear, they were contrite, they called right away and said, you know, to mention that the planning commission would be on the spot and the county board would see it, saying it would be fine if the planning commission wants to hear it, which is back to Chuck.
All right.
Okay. So this is located somewhat outside of Rolling Stone and it's on 114, so, you know, this is Rolling Stone and then this is the location. I'll show a little bit more detail, oops, I knew I was going to do that, I do it every time. Okay, and this is a little bit more detailed of the petition, or the parcel, and the red is showing where the fence line would basically be located and everything within that red would be the new solar garden, so the next one will be a photo of that more detailed plan. Or, I'm sorry, and we're just kind of showing the location of the other locations of other dwellings, that one towards the north is the petitioner's dwelling, the other one that's 650 feet away from them, and I'm also showing the bluff land that this petition is not in. And then this is a little bit more detailed of how that solar panels are going to be laid out, basically facing south, which only would make sense. And this is a photo pretty much showing the, looking towards the north. The developers did not put in their petition that they were going to put a vegetative screening, but it is recommended in the conditional, in the conditions. Is there any questions? Yes?
If they're going to put a, and if it's part of the conditions, you can see there's power lines there, you can't put trees and what stuff within so many feet of a power line and I think their fence will be, so will the, will the screening be on the inside of the fence or the outside of the fence?
Well, as they pointed out in their petition, they're 130 feet from that center line, so that would be in between those two, I would believe.
You still lost me Chuck. Oh, wait, Kay?
Just, just a side note, but in terms of predation by predators, inside the fence, might just take out a few of them, you know, in terms of deer browse and rabbits, I know that some of our other permitted solar facilities have tried to place findings inside the fence for that reason.
Okay.
So does that answer your question, Mark?
So basically here's the, I believe the utility poles or the lines, here's the fence and you can see there's still a little bit room between the solar panels and the, where the fence would be located.
Can you point those out again? I'm sorry, I just didn't follow.
Okay, so this would, this is a road of, of course. This is the, I believe the utility... This is the utility lines.
Gotcha.
This is the fence.
Okay.
And these are the solar panels, so there is a little bit of room here to put some screening.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I may, so I'm wondering, we've got the Meish and what was the other one?
Gibbs.
Gibbs, and this one, and I don't know how far the Speltz and Kingfelders are, but are these all flowing into the, the same main power lines and is there ever a concern about how much power goes into one area and stray voltage and potential for how that affects dairy animals and...
In one of the conditions is again the stray voltage measurements and how they're going to do that prior to, during, and after.
So I understand that and that's consistent with what we've done, but my question is the cumulative effect of now five gardens in the same area.
Yeah.
And that, that was really never, you know, each individual, I mean, what if everybody on the road decides to do it? That's a good point.
It's a good point and there's also, if you look at 248 now, there seems to be quite a buildup of utility lines, so I'm trusting that they're planning for that.
That, that could be largely because of the Speltz. Jim Speltz is much larger than the rest of these, is that right? That's where the, that's where the buildup is coming from on 248?
Yeah.
As far as Jim... Yeah, and these are...
This is one megawatt.
So I'm guessing it's due to the Speltz application that they're, that's the power that, that they're handling with the additional lines?
You know, and I guess those questions would probably be best to be addressed to the petitioner and, because they would have much more knowledge on that.
I was just going to ask, maybe at a risk of divulging some information, we might be next month looking at one right across the road from us, different that did we, but I did pose that question to that consultant and according to what they found out with Excel is that there was a lot of capacity yet to, to be your life vessel or... Question that could pose to, to non-traction suit.
Well, Kay, go ahead.
I'm just curious how stray voltage is defined? Is that electromagnetic radiation? Is that voltage that's not being captured? What does that mean, stray?
You should...
I mean, it's kind of relevant to Steve's comment.
Yeah, stray voltage, so in a dairy facility, many, many times the, the cows and the stanchions that they're standing within, if there's too much power in the area, the, the power can find its way out of the system and use the animals as grounds, which there's been a number of lawsuits, if you, if you look into them, that have been, Dairyland Power lost a major case due to damaging farmers from stray voltage, so, so I don't, I mean, first of all, I don't think we should single out any one petitioner and treat them any different than anyone else, but I think maybe the county needs to look at, you know, what's the practice and what's the policy and how much power can we produce? When, when the Ridgeway facility was proposed, there was a lot of concern about stray voltage within, you know, it was right within the community there, so, and I think there was even more concern before the two towers just came down because if all it wants, the wind blows and it blows hard, there's, you know, yet, that was all in the same area yet too, so... So I don't, I don't know if that's a conversation that maybe the planning commission wants to pick up, I don't want to single out one petitioner and say you're the problem if we're allowing everyone else to do it, I don't, I want them to be treated the same as everyone else.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Just a question, all of the neighbors were notified that this was happening, correct?
Correct, 32.
And you did not receive any concerns from any of the neighbors?
None.
Okay, thank you.
Do you still wish to speak, Kay, or? Okay. Okay, thank you Chuck. At this time, does the petitioner's representative wish to speak on the proposal? State your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Edgar Lara and I am here representing Novel and we're based out of Westing Paul, 1633 Roberts Street, Suite A, 55118. First wanted to take the time to say thank you to Norton Township for, and to Winona County for helping us out with the mixed up dates and I believe we were given, we might be given an opportunity to have that township form signed and turned in for our county board on April 9th. We will definitely have that in hand for staff and so we hope that you can help work with us and we appreciate Norton Township's efforts and coming here and sticking up for us, so thank you so much. That being said, we agree with the Winona County staff, the, the terms in which the conditional use permit will be approved, the, I'm hearing out your, your concerns with stray voltage and we do definitely always want to take those concerns to heart and make sure we address them, so we'll be working with Excel closely to test the voltage before installation of community, of this community solar garden, see what that level is before and then once it's installed, check the stray, stray voltage afterwards and if there's any changes, we will definitely address them, but we have never had issues with this in the past and when we do stray voltage tests on our projects, usually they come back neutral, with no negative effects on the surrounding land. Also did want to reiterate that none of the residents had anything to say about this and Excel has also worked with us closely on past projects and it's worked out well. We agree with the findings and I guess we're just here to address any questions or concerns that the board or the public might have about this project. It's a one megawatt community solar garden and I guess the, one of the last things I wanted to mention is that these set plans actually show arrays right here. The last time, the most recent layout that we have, per Dwayne, who is the property owner, actually took their arrays from this northern part and spread them out to this southern part because Dwayne would like to keep this empty, so, so farm it, meaning that the fence line is also going to be about right here, not all the way up here, but right here. There's three things we do to address this. First is that the panels are covered with an anti-glare coating. These panels are meant to absorb the energy of the sun. Any, they're meant to get as much as they can out of the sun. They're not meant to reflect. The second thing is that they're pointed south, so you actually wouldn't be able to see directly coming from either side of the road. And third thing is that we're willing to work with staff on a landscaping plan to make sure that we have adequate screening to make sure, triple sure, that no one will catch any glare and if whatsoever from this solar garden on their drive or walking by, so we'll definitely work with them closely on that and that's something we can definitely do. So, with that being said, I'll make myself available for any questions or comments anybody might have.
Now, is this electricity connected to Excel with a... Now, is this electricity connected to Excel with a substation, or how did you get it into the line? I mean...
Right, it's connected to a, there's a point of interconnection that we use to connect into, there's a substation nearby, I believe, that we, we work with the area, with the Excel designers, and they tell us pretty much what has to get done to get connected. So, we work with them, and usually there is a poll involved, but they're the ones that make those decisions as to how to connect to their, to their substation. So... Sure. By the way, this is my colleague, Tom. He also works for Novel.
Tom Dixon with Novel Energy. I'll just kind of help out a little bit with some of the questions regarding, one, that Mr. Jacob was asking about regarding capacity left in the Excel transmission lines and consequently, the substation. So, we run capacity screens with them, so we'll get an idea of how much capacity is actually left in their substation. And right now, so I'm understanding that there's plenty left. Secondly, once we meet with the Excel Energy Designer out there, they give us a better understanding of how we're gonna actually physically connect into their system and kind of work out everything in that regard. We do have an interconnection agreement in place. We know that there's plenty of capacity left right now in order to build this project, so that's a non-issue, a non-concern on our end. Secondly, regarding, as Edgar was pointing out, regarding the anti-glare, so there's an anti-glare coating that's applied on our solar panels, and the good thing about solar panels is that, with it being a technology, it's getting better and better. It would be very minimal. We are more than happy to work with staff on a landscaping and screening plan to go wherever you would like. We've done many of those in the past. So, I noticed in the, as a condition, there's evergreens that were mentioned as a possibility of screening. You know, we generally use spruce and pine trees, coniferous type plant species. So, happy to work with you on that. And then, I think lastly, regarding the questions that were brought up regarding the stray voltage, generally, that's something we work with Excel Energy directly on as well. So, their engineers, their designers that we'll be meeting with, I can actually just take out that part that's written as a condition, give that specific language to them and say, "This is what we're looking for, this is what we need you to determine, and make sure there aren't any concerns with stray voltage to any nearby properties, dairy farms, what have you." More than happy to do that, and yeah, just wanted to make that point clear as well. Hope that helps.
Just a question on stray energy. Does it typically result from a deficiency in a connection to the substation or something? Or how do you get that?
So, I'm not a licensed electrician, but generally, from my discussions with Excel, stray voltage is more from an overhead standpoint, whereas all of our electrical is gonna be ground-mounted, it's gonna be underground. They'll have their new poll, but the last one that we had done, it was just, they just flat-out told us, like, it's a non-issue, there's no way there's gonna be stray voltage here. But we're, no, we'll still go through that process, we'll do the test before, we'll do the commission, we can do periodic commission stray voltage testing, whether you want like six months, one year, intervals, whatever you'd like. That's, I guess that's how we would address it, just to make absolutely certain.
Steve?
And again, I don't have any concerns with this one particular application, but, you know, part of my understanding of stray voltage is you have a grid system, and your power company is already fully supplying that grid system, enough for everyone at all times, in case the sun goes down, or clouds come over, or the wind goes down, the power's already there. So, every system you add on just goes into that same grid, and it just, so at some point, you know, how much power do you need? How can the power get away? How much power is in the area? You just keep adding to the same grid. The system as a whole has to be designed for it.
And what I heard someone say is that you've checked with Excel, and they have confirmed that there is, they've got a lot of excess capacity available for this project.
Correct, and that's what we look for, actually, before we apply for permits, because we want to make sure we'll be able to fit on the power grid, so. And we've actually had Excel tell us that they don't have space in certain areas, and we have not moved forward with permits in those, for those projects.
Mark? Okay, I guess I'm going off of page four, right out of your Novel Energy Solutions thing in our packet, page fifty-eight in the Planning Commission one. Second paragraph, it says, "Solar panels have the equivalent glare factor as a body of water."
Less than a body of water.
That's not what it says here. Solar panels have an equivalent glare factor as a body of water. It's your words. My point is, you don't show it far enough here, but do you know the height difference between this road, right about here, and that? It's gotta be thirty to forty feet down. So, I'm concerned the late afternoon sun hitting them when you're driving from an elevated position. I understand the flat road, and I understand at these points south, but there is no glare that's gonna come off of there. I mean, you yourself said it's the same glare as a body of water. And I mean, if there was a pond of water there, you would have a pretty good glare when the sun was late in the day, and you're coming down off of this hill. That's the biggest question I have on this whole thing, is glare driving, when you're driving west in the afternoon, looking into the solar panels?
Definitely, screening will be crucial at that point, facing the parcel to the east, so that people cannot catch any glare, if any, coming from that part of the road. The landscaping plan that we're gonna work with Chuck on will address that concern. Also, the panels are pointed south.
I would just add too, again, the panels are designed to absorb the sun, not reflect it, the whole point of...
I'm just using your words, your words that you have written here. That's what I'm using, I'm not making them up.
I think the point was, I don't have the application, but the, I think the point that I hear, the letter was trying to make is that it's very minimal. Bad choice of words, the glare on our panels are very minimal. The whole point is to absorb it, that's how it generates electricity, not reflect it. Hopefully that's...
What was the plan for vegetation around there? Because like Mark was saying, that's like forty feet above. None of us will see that vegetation to cover that in our lifetime.
Are you talking about...
The screening or...
Yeah, yeah, Mark was saying that, you know, like, the road is like forty feet up there, and that is down below. It's gonna take a long time to get something up forty, fifty feet to cover that.
Generally, generally, we plant coniferous trees, so spruce pine trees, and generally around a height of six to eight foot. Concerns about trying to plant something taller than that is the chance of survival when you're planting a tree very tall. So, that's generally what we're using, we space them out to the point where they grow into each other and just naturally grow up to...
So, you plant them there about six to eight feet tall when you plant them?
Yeah. Maybe six foot, six foot's a good, good number.
You did the Dingfelder, that was a novel. And that was like three-foot trees. Yeah, yeah.
I even brought a plan we used on a project just recently. That would be a, held on, kind of the legend. If you're looking at something similar to that, there are other recommendations.
Okay. As a horticulturalist, what are your thoughts on this subject?
Well, as a former landscape contractor, we've got, we have specifications of sizes in the zoning ordinance, and one of the local nurseries got a load of plants in and weren't sure they penciled out properly, so I actually ran over there with the tape to make sure they met the zoning ordinance spec, and some of them didn't, so they got some more of them in. So, I mean, we can do some things like that to ensure that they meet the specifications that the planning designer signs them. There's a point, eight to ten-foot evergreens sometimes sit and sulk longer than putting in something as a five-foot goldenbrow left or container grower, or six foot. And after a five-to-six-year period, the slightly smaller size might outstrip the larger ones that are sitting there, not quite happy. So, there is a point that is made about that. Maybe too, in terms of coverage, that some deciduous might have to be used, or on the property owner's, you know, property that keeps his own field out, or a little bit of field on production in order to accomplish a square factor. But we don't have an approved plan yet, this is still a discussion for the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Can you wait, wait till we get to the public hearing? Okay. Any other questions to these two gentlemen by the Planning Commission? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last time, completely mixed up here. Do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
That's a second. So, Dwayne Herbert is the applicant, right?
Right.
So, usually, the applicant has the opportunity to talk, and you just kind of told him not to talk.
Right, right.
Well, okay, I, I, I'm, how many, how many people representing the applicant do we need to listen to here?
Well, I don't know.
Go ahead, Dwyane, step forward and state your name.
I'm Dwayne Herbert.
You gotta speak into the mic.
I'm Dwayne Herbert, I'm property owner. And some of the questions that had come up, I might be able to get, put, make some input. On the map here, there's, right in here, there's some large trees that block the view of the road coming this way, so that would be a screening. And then, I have a private array that's been in place up here for three months, and I've never noticed any reflection whatsoever coming off of there at any time of the day. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, Mark, do you wish to...
Yes, move to open the...
Open a public hearing, and Steve seconds it. All those in favor of opening the public hearing for docket PC-three-twenty-one-nineteen-oh-two, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the proposal, please step forward, state your name and address, and tell us what you have to say. At this time, does the representative of the town board want to speak, or?
My name is Roy McHale's from Norton Township. First of all, I want to say, I've never seen that map before. You know, this all knew to me, and I wish we would have seen it, we would have had it for our meeting, we could have talked about it, we couldn't discuss this thing at all. First thing I'll say is, I've seen an awful lot of solar systems. If you want to see them, just go to West Rochester and Highway fourteen. I've never seen a glare off of one yet, no place. However, this stray voltage thing is something I'm sure you people know nothing about. Nobody can tell me there's not gonna be, there can't possibly be stray voltage off of this system or any other system. A substation is designed to capture the stray voltage, but where does that stray voltage go? Some of them got batteries that store it. I've been involved quite a bit with this stray voltage stuff. My son's an electrician and works with it. Many times, I've heard you could take a light bulb, if you can ground that light bulb and walk into a substation, it'll light up. There's that much, that stray voltage. Stray voltage is excess electricity out of an electric, electric system. If it produces more than it's supposed to, the stray voltage, it's grounded. That's the way they get rid of stray, extra voltage, it's grounded. It has to go someplace. Stray voltage travels in a straight line only, and manure pits are the biggest drawer of stray voltage there is. If a farmer has a barn between the substation and his manure pit, and it's in a straight line, he's got stray voltage coming out of there, what can he do about it? He can't, I'd be scared as hell if I was living right across the road there. And if you want to know, the most sensitive thing to stray voltage is, is a cat. If you see your cats laying on top of your calves, or sitting up on ledges or something, they're picking up stray voltage. I mean, they can be. I know of a farmer that had a row of calf huts, and the end calf would just, never did very well, he was, and eventually died after a long time. He didn't grow, he was skinny. They finally, a guy from, checks out the stray voltage, told him, "Move that calf hut, move it over someplace else." He moved it off that spot, and he never had a sick or lost a calf again, because he took it off of that straight line that that stray voltage goes in. As it's traveling through the ground, it'll come up and connect to whatever it can. It's really a complex thing, I don't understand it all either. And I'm just telling you how this stray voltage works. I'm not against this thing. Our town board wasn't against it. I kind of, myself, from an environmental standpoint, wonder why you put them right alongside a public road like that, why don't you get them back off out of sight? You know, a lot and lot of people were so concerned about frac sand mining and stuff, it, it wrecks the scenery, the countryside, you know? Well, now, we're doing it with these things. And I'd like to see them back off the road where we don't have to look at them all the time, but maybe that's not feasible, I don't know. Other than that, our, you know, like I say, our board, we met a week ago Tuesday night. We had nothing there to go on, we never saw this thing, I never saw it till tonight, and...
Did your board have a special meeting to discuss it, or how did the...
I mean, I, to this day, I haven't gotten that map.
So, there is, there is no input from the Norton Board? I thought I saw a sheet here.
They're gonna meet the day of the county board meeting.
The night before.
We had, we couldn't act on it, because we had no, nothing there. From what I understand, the representative that was gonna be at our meeting came the next day. But we...
You will act on it at your next town board meeting, right?
I think that's too late, ain't it?
No, if we get, make it a condition, Roy, it can move forward, but you would have to have written approval of Norton Township before the commissioners could act on it.
The next day.
What's the date of your next meeting?
April eighth?
They don't have to take a position at all.
Okay.
They can take no position, or approve it, or, but if they say they don't want it, then it should, that should weigh in. If there's no, if there's no position on it, is it, do they still have to go through that? Just usually, that's what we get, I mean, more often than not, we get a response from the township officer that says, "We're neither for, again, we take no position on this." So, that, that would be fine, we take no position, or we support it, that would be fine, but if we, if the county gets something that says what your concerns are, then, you know, we really need to weigh those concerns out.
Yeah, we don't have no concerns about it. I think, I think we'd have to say we just take no, we're neutral on the subject.
But you got, what, two-thirds of your board here right now?
We're all here, all three of us. We got a new guy back.
I was looking for Harold.
No, Harold, he's, he retired. He retired, he had family issues.
We got a meeting, there's a meeting the night before, and we could take a position on that and get that to somebody the next day.
That would have to come to planning and zoning, right? Okay.
Somebody email it to you? Or if we take no position, do we have to do that? I mean, we've got the board here.
Well, you have to acknowledge that you take no position, I presume.
I mean, the board is here, could, can it be acknowledged this evening?
I think that's gotta be done at an official meeting.
Probably, yeah.
But it feels, it feels like the Norton Township people have the right to come to the Norton Township meeting, and know what's gonna be on the agenda, and that, you know, if someone had a concern, you'd be circumventing that by making that decision here tonight.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, the open meeting law would require that, that action be taken at...
We have to post, post the meeting three days ahead of time and then we have to have the meeting. We can't do any business amongst ourselves out of a, out of a called meeting.
So if we'd, if we do it that evening, the eighth, email it to Kay then that evening or the next morning, it would be fine for the county commissioners meeting? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I believe you set a deadline of eight, by eight fifteen the next morning. Was that what you said, Chuck?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
Um, one other thing, our township, I don't know quite how to, know to say this. We, we don't, like, like for conditional use permits and all that kind of stuff.
You don't do your own thing.
We like the people to come to us, tell us what's going on and, but all we do is give them their blessing. We, we turn that all over to the county. Is that how that works?
Yeah. The county always asks for the township to.
They just ask for our interest in it. Other than that, we have no jurisdiction over.
You've turned your zoning over to the county.
Yeah.
As part of the county's policies, we ask for the township's input on it.
Counsel?
Just to clarify, the recommendation from staff, knowing that this was an issue, is that the motion be made contingent on receiving that notification form with either in favor or no comment. And so that would mean that if it came back as anything else, then it wouldn't be before the county board, it would come back here, but otherwise it would go forward.
Do we all understand that?
Yes.
Okay.
I just have, this is just a process question, I'm sorry, but do we normally engage with the public commenters, or are we, are we doing something we normally don't do?
Well, I wondered when you asked him to come up under the public hearing, because he is a township official and I didn't know whether he should be, it was told to us beforehand that we had the township representation here.
Okay.
Basically, all we do is, is state our opinion. We have no lawmaking jurisdiction or anything like that. It's just more or less a courtesy thing to the township, I guess, when, when something like this comes up that they come to us first and let us know and.
If you have concerns, it'll be heard.
Yeah.
It is a public hearing, so anybody can speak.
Yes.
I guess that's about all I got to say. We're, we're fine with it. If, you know, for, for now, I guess we got no, I don't know what we want to say.
What we'll do is, we'll have our meeting and then that evening or the next morning, it'll be email to Kay.
Thank you, Roy.
Our solar business is great. I mean, we've got that sun up there that can power the whole world and never burn out and, and.
Never is a long time, Roy.
Well, somebody told me the other day this winter, there was snow on the sun too, so I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. For the second time, anyone wishing to speak to docket number two, please step forward, state your name and address and what you have to say. For the third time, anyone wishing to speak to agenda item PC dash three dash twenty-one dash nineteen dash oh two, please step forward, state your name and address and say your piece.
I move to close the public hearing.
Steve moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh.
Vince.
Vince.
Vince seconds it. I have a terrible time sometimes. Kelly knows all too well. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of closing the public hearing for PC dash three dash twenty-one dash nineteen dash oh two, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion on either the findings of fact or the conditions for this proposed CUP? Sheree.
I would propose then that we accept staff's recommendations and the conditions and recommend this CUP to the county board.
Now, that includes the, what counsel stated before, right?
The two, the two pieces of the findings, recommend approval with the findings and the conditions and the, that recommendation is contingent on receipt of the township acknowledgement form by no later than eight fifteen on April ninth, two thousand and nineteen with a recommendation of in favor or no.
Correct. That is absolutely right. And I'll second your motion.
All right, Kelly second. Is there any discussion on a motion to recommend?
Mark? I just have a question and probably a comment for them. They're building one of these right next to our dairy right now, and I think they underplay the amount of semi-loads of equipment that come there. And I think if you guys can do anything to stage them a little better than having four semis parked on a dangerous hill, at one point in time, we could not leave our property for forty-five minutes because a semi tried to turn around and got stuck. And a lot of times it was four semis sitting out on the highway, out on the road, and if they could just stage them so that they could stage them in a town or something, somewhere's off of, one fourteen is not a very wide road. So I guess that's the only comment I have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Steve, how many do we have in this county right now of these setups here for?
There's a half a dozen, right?
Yeah.
In this immediate area, and for some reason, this seems to be the magnet, the one that they, they had applied for up in Ridgeway that dissolved. This area is, and then there's, there's a lot of smaller setups.
My, my question and related to that is from a safety standpoint, sheriff's department wouldn't have any, they haven't had any vandalism or, or anything like that too?
No.
Nothing along that line? Those are ones that have already been established?
They're all fenced in.
Okay. Sometimes that's, you know, some wild goose wants to do some activity, you know? I'm just curious about that, if that's ever been an issue?
How big of a solar garden can you have without having to apply for a CUP?
It has to be under an acre in size.
Oh, it's size, not wattage?
It's not relative to wattage, it's relative to the land that is covered at this point in our ordinance. We are looking at reviewing the solar ordinance, but at this time, it's a one acre.
Be a big one.
And you, but you still need a permit?
So you would still need a permit for anything under that size, it just would be one that you could get over the counter.
Or under the counter.
So one question that I have.
Steve.
Is, it just says on the docket, in regards to following, quote, conditional interim use permit. So is the application for conditional use, is it for interim use? And, you know, in fact, the matter is, we didn't really discuss that on the last application either.
It was interim, the last one was interim. She said it. She said interim use.
On the, on the docket, it says conditional slash interim.
Yeah, and I talked to the petitioner and in the staff report, he addressed that he wants this as a conditional use and not a interim use. I think that's one or the first or second page.
Yes, it is. And that, that is how we draft findings, we're prepared as well as how they condition.
Okay. But now, docket number one, the petitioner did agree that that could be an, that was an interim use permit.
They did.
So we understand that. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of recommending docket number two, PC dash three dash twenty-one dash nineteen dash oh two, as the way that counsel and Sheree said it, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The docket number two has received the approval of the planning commission and, subject to the conditions that are in herein, it will be presented to the county commissioners if that's met. Does everybody understand?
Yes.
I have a question when you're done with that.
Okay. All right, I think that settles it. Mark, go ahead.
What Steve said over there about making sure we don't have too many of these in one place, that what's starting to bother me, now, don't get me wrong, Dewey, I'm not against it, is the number of acres of good, tillable land we're taking out of production for this. I know when we talked about this at the, at the, whatever meeting, there's, you know, we talked about a few solar things, but it's really starting to take a lot of acres out of, out of production. And I don't know, you'd start taking a lot of acres out of production. They don't make land anymore, not good tillable land. And that's sad that a lot of these are going on the, on the really good tillable land and I'm hoping that we can have a discussion on that too as well.
Go ahead.
I'd like to add to what Mark's saying. When I first read the proposal and saw that there was arable land being taken out, I know it can be used in the future after the solar garden is no longer there, but I wondered about the yield and the productivity of the soil and if that may have been a factor, if that may have been something to help them to decide that that's not a good area really for crop production or that the yield has decreased over time. It, it was just a question in my head that felt like I would have more comprehensive information to kind of understand how the plan's carrying out.
Well, kind of along those lines, the frustration that I've had is our elimination of being able to put any structures on bluffs. How many south-facing bluffs do we have in Winona County that don't have fields on them that probably, in my view, I would much prefer to see these solar arrays on south-facing hillsides than on prime cropland, but our ordinance prohibits any structures on bluffs. So, and I've brought it to the county board more than once and it's been dead on arrival. So, but I'm just saying it's a frustration to me.
Mark?
Well, my point is we have bluff land people here that want to protect the bluffs. We have water people here that want to protect the water. We have air people here that want to protect the water. We have everyone here except no one really cares about farmland. That's why I'm sticking up for good tillable farmland because nobody around here seems to care about it. And I mean, you always have people that like everything else, but we don't have very many advocates for, for good tillable land in this county.
Which is pretty much the prime directive of the county.
It is, but yet for some reason or another, like I said, the bluff tops are protected, the streams are protected and everything else but farmland. That's why I said what I said.
Yeah, yeah. I, I want, I want to, I want to hear what Dewey has to say.
Well, it's the chair that actually.
Well, yeah, go ahead, but step forward, please. Otherwise Annie's going to have trouble.
All right. That particular piece of land is highly erodible because I had a lot of washing in it and that. If we put these solar array in here, they will have grasses and everything planted underneath it. It'll stabilize the ground and probably even bring back some of the topsoil that, from the higher areas sifting into that area, it'll hold the topsoil back. And, you know, and I'm thinking it'll actually add to the quality of the land after this is all over. If in twenty-five years they remove the thing and the land will actually be in better shape. They always say, all the prairie land and everything, since it's been plowed up, has lost topsoil. This is an opportunity for a poor piece of ground to gain topsoil or save it from going down the dry runs and to the river. Thank you.
Is that answer your question, or?
Well, I just, I just want it brought up for future, for future conversation, is that's what I'm talking about.
Let's see. That ends our discussion of the petitions. I, where's my agenda here? All right. Item number six is discussion regarding procedures.
Thank you. This is on your agenda tonight due to a request from the county board that we talked to both the board of adjustment as well as the planning commission regarding the procedures that we're using and whether or not there's any suggestions, recommendations for improving those for you. The, I do want to start off by saying we need to be very careful about this discussion tonight. There is a litigation hold relating to any discussions of what took place at the February twenty-first board of adjustment meeting, so we cannot talk about that. Staff won't talk about it and a number of you have received information that you should not either. However, we can talk about these things in general. What the process is, how we're currently doing it, why we're currently doing it that way, and then if there's any suggestions for how we can make it better for you, give you the information that you need and still get the high-quality decisions that we've been seeing more over the last couple of years. So to start with, the process did change a couple of years ago, I think it was three or four. I'm, I'm not exactly sure when. It started based, started based on some trainings that were, that we went to statewide where there was a lot of discussion about how land use decisions should be made at the county level. What the case law was coming out of, the court was saying is that if we do not have well-reasoned written findings, the court is going to overturn those decisions. Regardless of what the boards want to see, they could just get kicked back because we're not doing things the right way. That's why the procedures started to be revised. Our first step that we did, if I recall correctly, we started by just giving the criteria with no analysis in there, and it was either choose which way and then tell us what you think should be in there. That proved very time-consuming, very problematic for a number of our planning commission and board of adjustment members. There was a lot of struggles with it. I know some of you remember some of those very lengthy meetings. We, at that point, we were asked to, based on the staff analysis, start providing those kind of in a draft form as a starting point, which we started doing. Some of the changes that were made from there based on requests from board of adjustment, planning commission, while we were kind of trying to figure out how the process was best suited, included adding the red underlining that you see, that didn't used to be there, but we wanted to, we were asked to make sure that we could draw attention to the things that didn't meet our ordinance so that there could be enough discussion about those points. The draft watermark was added as a request. It was made a little bit lighter based on requests, but in general, over the last several years, the feedback that we've gotten is that it's very helpful to have those as the starting point. We've also been training over the last couple of years about the appropriate way to be using our staff reports and our findings of fact. The staff reports are by ordinance. We are required, staff is required to provide a recommendation to both the board of adjustment and the planning commission, which is what they, they've been doing a great job with lately. I know we've had some compliments about the quality of the staff reports. The same thing with the findings of fact, we've also received compliments about how well those are working. But they are both drafts or they're recommendations to you, and that's what we've been training about for several years, is take the staff report, which is generated at a point in time when the basic information is there. More information may come and take that into consideration as well when reviewing your findings of fact, and then it's your decision. You can always revise those, you can always change those, and we've had a number of times where that does in fact happen. So the question for discussion tonight is what can we do to improve the process, make things better for you, and still make sure that the legally supportable decisions are being made because the burden changes depending on whether or not we have those findings. If we don't have well-reasoned findings in place, then the burden is on the county to prove that what we did was reasonable and it's a high burden. If we have those findings, the burden is on the challenger to prove that what we did was arbitrary and capricious or unreasonable. And so it, it's a big burden shift and it's very important for us to make sure that the decisions that you guys want to make are actually going to be able to stand the test of the law. So, discussion, any? Yes?
I've had a burning question for months, actually, and this is probably, hopefully, the right forum to pose it. I, I have been impressed with the staff and, and how comprehensive these packets are, but I wonder, at what point do But I wonder, at what point do we look to other state agencies for actual information? Department of Ag, Department of Natural Resources, you know, if they've got, if they've got testing on wells, at, at what point is that something we have access to, or can even speak of, when we're looking at certain things?
It really depends on what's before you. A lot of times, if there's a question out there that staff knows about, they will pull information and provide that to you. I know with the, the silica sand zoning ordinance amendment, we all, or some of us remember some of those lengthy meetings, and how many of them there were, there was a list generated. They said, "We want all this information," there was a list of all the additional information, and staff went back and got that, and provided it for the next meeting. So, it kind of depends on how it relates, and what you're looking for, and whether or not we're gonna run afoul of the 60-day rule, and how important it becomes, but there are ways that we can get additional information if it's appropriate.
At this point, Kay?
Oh, just to, just to dovetail on that, that question, oftentimes, the DNR, or other agencies that may be impactful to add to the body of facts that, for the use of the Planning Commission, are contacted by staff and asked to weigh in. They, and then they ask it in a timely fashion, but oftentimes, they do, and you certainly include it in the packet. Other times, the Water and Soil Resources, or more particularly, the Defense of Pollution Control Agency, has helped, as they helped in air quotes, but helped, helped to inform the construction of that particular chapter of the zoning ordinance, so it ended up getting factored in to what you see before you in the zoning ordinance to consult.
Thank you.
I think that if water quality in particular is in question, the Pollution Control and Conservation Service and everything, you're required to notify them about the proposal, and they have the obligation to respond? Is, is that right?
F and M, PDEs.
Under certain circumstances.
And they have to be...
...review, the process is very rigid when it comes to maybe initially use permits. It's more discretionary, I think, so the state agencies have a strict protocol of when, how they should comment to local LGUs, so they might try to just manage, you know, it's very specific elements of it.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, the 60-day notice thing though, seems kind of odd, I mean, do you guys have that kind of advanced notice even, when...
Our, our, our time starts when we get the application packet, and then we have the 60 days, sometimes it can be extended under certain circumstances, and we, we do what we can to make sure that the decisions are made within the timeline, and still get you all the information that you would like.
Wow, you guys are busy.
Sometimes, yes.
Well, and that's one of the reasons why we had to do document number two with the recommendation of the Norton Township before the County Commissioners' meeting, otherwise we'd run afoul with the 60-day notice thing.
Okay.
Okay? Is there any other questions? Steve?
So, I would agree that staff does excellent work, and the points they bring forward are very important. Some of the concerns I've heard from the community is that, I understand, Stephanie, that you want to build a case that you can really defend. Unfortunately, many times, it's, it's the democratic process playing out, that the result that you get from the democratic process playing out might not be the one that you feel that you can defend the best, but I think ultimately, your job is to defend whatever comes out of the democratic process.
And my, my only goal with all of this is to make sure that whatever decision you make is based on the record before you, and that it's, the findings are clear. I don't care what that decision is, I care that there's a reasoned analysis for it.
So, and I think the recommendations have been neutral enough, but on occasion, there's clear conclusions drawn, written in black and white. And when conclusions are drawn and written, written in black and white by staff, prior to the public hearing having taken place, to me, that doesn't feel right. And I feel like nothing should be etched in stone until all the input is gathered, and then the elected through appointment makes their determination, and then, and at that point, then staff would, or legal is gonna have to defend whatever it is, even, even though it might not be the outcome that you feel is, is the outcome that you'd want.
I don't care what your outcomes are, and I would absolutely agree with you, nothing should be etched in stone until the conclusion of the public hearing and your discussions, that's why what we provide you is a starting point, and that's what we've been training for several years, is that it's, it's a draft, it's a starting point. Change, modify, amend, it happens all the time. I'm here to help make sure that when you do do that, that there's a reason in there for it, that there's something in writing that can support whatever your finding is, but we're not, we're not giving you anything that's etched in stone. And one of the suggestions that did come out of the Board of Adjustment meeting earlier today, is to make sure that there's essentially some disclaimer language in the staff report to show that it is a recommendation, based on what's available at that time, and that the Board of Adjustment or the Planning Commission are free to modify these as they wish.
Kay?
Mr. Chair, in, in respect to that last statement by counsel, the term used in the staff report is staff analysis. It's very clear, when I lead it, and I review at the staff report, that this is analysis based on a point in time, with the information we have at that time from the petitioner, and responses from state agencies, and the townships, and the research that is done. At no point are we advocating for a position, or stating, this is what we know at this time when it's painted. So, we're providing one set of instructions, and statements, without intending ever with that staff report to be included in our technical docs, and that point, other facts come in, maybe that you have, decisions that you make, and we carry forward through. Thank you.
All right, Kelly?
I guess I have been very impressed with the factual nature of the staff analyses that we've received. There are conclusions drawn, but they are conclusions drawn from the facts and evidence that they've gathered, and how those facts and evidence relate to the, the zoning ordinance. And given that, I think it's very fair for the staff to draw the staff conclusion. And I think it's their obligation to do that. And I, I think it's also the obligation of our legal counsel to make certain that findings, the findings that we come up with, support our conclusions. I mean, there's a staff conclusion, there's a Planning Commission conclusion, and then there's a board conclusion. It's one step in the process. So, I, I, I would feel uncomfortable if we weren't getting the quality, quality of information that we are receiving right now. If it were to be watered down, I, I think it would damage the integrity of the process we're engaged in. Now, that being said, I would sometimes, and I realize, you know, we're, we've got 60 days, and everybody's working really hard to make certain that, you know, to the extent that we can accommodate the applicants, that we do that within 60 days, sometimes I have wanted more information. More information that's not always readily available, and would probably cause somebody a lot of work and time to get. So, but, you know, it would be nice at some point if we embarked on a project to kind of get history into a searchable database, you know? You know, the things that we deal with the most here so far, my experience has been more than one dwelling on 40 acres, feedlots, and solar arrays, those are the top three, I think, I mean, that's just me, off the top of my head, because I don't have a searchable database, but, you know, if we could get that information available to us, then when we get an application in front of us, we can go, okay, how often do we do this? What have we done in the past when faced with this sort of a decision point? How many complaints have there been countywide? You know, how many, how many violations have there been? That sort of thing. That would give us a context, I believe, to make better decisions. But I, I think our process is working very well, and what I'm asking, I realize, is a, is a big ask.
It will be a while before we...
I, I would imagine. It, it doesn't have to be a searchable database, I mean, it can be a piece of paper.
I can have an intern, like, know what we have, we've had for past permits in the last 10 years, but, you know, that's about the extent we can get to it them quickly.
On, on these three items, though, to have just a piece of paper that has some history on it that we can draw from would, would be awesome. And, but again, I realize that's a big ask, but I, I like our process, I think it's working well, I think we're getting mostly what we need, so I, I think it's good.
Steve?
So, to me, what would make the process better would be, and this was an area, I think we came from this and somehow got to where we are now, is that should the Planning Commission make this decision, here's what you can back it up with, and should you make this decision, here's what you can back it up with. And the frustrations that came from me, uh, the community, without mentioning any particular applications, was that through the Board of Adjustment especially, that conclusions were drawn, and there wasn't a parallel, here's the other conclusions that could be drawn, and you decide. I mean, it was, it was completely one-sided in that particular application. Alls I'm saying is, to add credibility to the work being done in the long run, goes that the democratic process plays out through the elected, appointed, and staff should offer up something for either, either avenue.
We, we did discuss that, we discussed that as part of the Board of Adjustment, Planning Commission discussions regarding our procedures, if I recall correctly. We decided not to do it that way, mostly for a number of reasons, one being...
Who's we?
It, it was a group discussion where we took that and came back with what we are currently using, and that's what everyone has seemed to like. The, there were a couple of reasons for that, one being that staff is told to make a recommendation, so they are taking the information, and their recommendation is to do this. It's not a, we don't know, you could go either way. And most of the time, it is fairly clear-cut on whether or not something needs a criteria. There are some where it can potentially go either way, and then you're welcome to change those findings if you disagree with it. But it was, the decision was that it, to some extent, I think you used the term watered down, it kind of waters things down if there's not really a recommendation from staff in there, particularly when staff is told to make that recommendation to the body.
Well, regardless of what, who the staff is, when, staff has every, there's every possibility that staff could have a political position themselves, and could have an outcome that they want to see happen more often than not. Staff is not the one that was elected, and, or appointed through the elected process. So, I just would like to see that as neutral as possible, because the electeds could be different at some point, the staff could be different at some point, I would just like the process to be consistent.
And that is why we have these bodies, is to make sure that the elected and appointed are the ones that are making the decisions and not staff.
And, and we all, like you say, we want things that are gonna be able to stand up in court, and I'm thinking, if you're the opposing attorney, and you've got staff laying out what the outcome is supposed to be, and a little room for the elected to interact with it, I don't think that's the best defense either, or defendable position either.
And staff is laying out your starting point for discussion, it's not be, this is the way it's supposed to be. It's a, it's a recommendation for you to take and do with it what you will, because you are the elected officials and the appointed persons that are making the decisions.
At this point, I'd like to interject a comment. We don't have Donnie Evansson anymore, but I don't see anybody on this current Planning Commission that's really bashful, so I would hope that you all take your position seriously, and do speak up if you don't agree with whatever is written. Okay, Pat, you want...
For, for the record, the comments that Lynn and Kelly have made, I agree with that 100%. You know, I, I, the, the staff that I've touched base with here, you're right on, you're doing your job, and helping out us and the community as best you can for the resources that you have. So, I just wanted to get that out on, on the record.
Well, I think partly why this is before us tonight was Board of Adjustment brought up at one of the recent Board of Adjustment meetings, this exact scenario, and then asked to bring it to the county board, and traditionally, those things go, Board of Adjustment doesn't usually discuss policy that much, and I had suggested, well, it goes back to Planning Commission, then the county board said, why don't you go back to Board of Adjustment and Planning Commission?
And actually, both do discuss the policies and procedures annually, just like you guys had to do your rules and procedures at the beginning, the Board of Adjustment sets theirs as well, so that's why it's going back before both.
Yeah, I agree that everyone has their, you know, there's no one here that's too bashful to speak their position, but that's, that's how it got, I think that's what, that's how it got before us, was hope from other things that were more problematic at Board of Adjustment.
And we're always happy to help you craft language. If you, you tell me what the points are, I will help make your finding support what your decision is. So, we've done that in the past, and we'll continue to do it that way, unless we have recommendations to change it for a reason.
Lynn?
Well, I was just gonna mention, Steve, for the staff to not make a recommendation, we'd almost have to have another body finding, finding the facts, doing the fact-finding. I mean, that, that's where it kind of feels like it may be not so objective in your mind, because they're the ones finding, finding the facts for us. There's no other group that's fact-finding.
Just to clarify, you are the fact-finders, we're just making you a recommendation, this is the fact-finding body, that's your role in all of this.
But there's background for us to make that finding.
Correct.
And that's where the staff comes in, to help us have...
So, in the interest of the most credibility to this body, and to staff and the government as a whole, the more the elected body does their job in the fullest, the more the community feels like it wasn't government being brought down to us, but us grassroots bringing the process or the, the outcome, so...
I agree, and we should also keep wanting to learn and read on our own, to be aware of what's happening.
Again, I'd like to interject at this point, and this petition number one from tonight, of course, that's my neighbor, so I, I've, I've been there a lot of times, but, and it was brought up about the, the fact that there was a mobile home there on this site before, and this is nothing against anybody on staff or anything, but the problem we have is, and this has been brought before this body many times in the last four years that I've been on this Planning Commission, is if you don't volunteer to come and get a CUP, or a permit, or anything, you can, I know of a $35,000 shed that's right along a township road, that the assessor must know it's there, but it's been built for 10 years, and they never got a permit. And going back to this petition tonight, how many of you remember Albert Hubenthal, the worm farmer?
From Stockton?
Yeah. This, if we pursued this, we could have another worm farm. And, you know, I don't, I don't want to say anything, because, but if we think that And, you know, I don't, I don't want to say anything because, but if we think that this planning and zoning is solving problems, I'm not so sure that we've reached the right conclusion. And the case in point is, the city of San Francisco, and that's a pretty large city, they, their tourist department passes out maps to the tourists so that they can avoid the fecal piles on the city's streets and roads and parks. And I ask you how the Board of Public Health can let that happen? But that's the honest-to-God truth! So, if you think we're going to solve all the problems of this world by having a Planning Commission or Board of Adjustment, you've got another thing coming.
We're, we're just trying to follow the law, make sure you're making good decisions.
Right, but, you know, there's.
There's a lot of other areas that we could be doing some work. Enforcement, we're working on proving those, so. There are things that are also in the works, it's not just prepping for these meetings.
Okay. You got more?
I don't have any more unless there's other questions or discussion to be had.
Did it, so, I'd have a question. Did anything come out of Board of Adjustment for a next step or something, any action to be taken, or?
No, the, the only thing that was even, kind of a recommendation, was to put that disclaimer language that I mentioned earlier, which was something we had already discussed, making sure that in the staff report, it's clear that this is staff's recommendation based on the date that the report is written, so that it's, you know, everybody acknowledges that there's additional information and that things may change between now and the actual meeting. So, we'll, we'll work on putting some language like that together.
And then one other comment at this time. I don't know if all of the current Planning Commission members understand, but even though the staff goes out and does a video and everybody tries to get the staff report together and everything, particularly on more contentious cases, a personal site visit really, really, really changes things, because you guys can be excellent photographers, and sometimes I, I can't even really recognize what you took. And there's an awful lot of other things that enter into the picture that you can gain from making those visits. I guess probably the most evident one was when we had the corner asphalt plant, or, no, that was a concrete plant over by Ridgeway. A site visit just makes it crystal clear really fast.
Just don't go in groups that will violate.
Right. We're, we're.
I'm trying to keep you on the straight and narrow here.
We're, we're doomed, but, yeah, individually, you can do it. I think you can do it two, two, can't you? But you, we can't go.
You could do it in, of two groups of three.
If, if we noticed it as a meeting, we could take the whole group, but it's problematic and troublesome when we do that, so.
But I, I really think that that's helpful for us to make the decision.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that, this is, I don't want this to seem in any way as an attack on staff. I think the staff is all very competent. I think, but I, I feel it's, it's foolish to believe that, I mean, if I was staff, I would probably be gathering facts that some people might not like, and everyone's going to add their own flavor to it some way or another. And what I'm trying to do is get it so that it's the, it's the elected, it's the elected process, democratic process, playing out, and it looks as clear to the community that, that, that they're, they're getting the results of their, of their election and their, their elected process, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Kelly?
I guess, you know, we, we hire and pay our zoning and planning staff for their expertise in zoning and planning, and, and I think part of the training that they have received throughout their education and work experience in zoning and planning is that you don't gather only the facts that you may want to gather, because that would create a situation in which you were not carrying out your duties impartially. And I think that's pretty well-engrained into zoning and planning training. So, I think if we were to ask them to do pro or con, we would really be eroding the nature of the work we are asking them to do. We're asking them to make an informed, impartial recommendation. So, I, I think, I think they're doing an excellent job.
So, along those lines, I mean, where, what I have it to compare to was my past planning director, Jason Gilman. It seemed like, prior to him, our planning director was a lightning rod. Jason Gilman, seemed like the community was much more brought together, and now I see more divisiveness. So, I think, I think staff can affect how things. I, I preferred the way Jason Gilman and his policies and the more neutral approach in giving both sides, tho, those are the things I have to compare to, and I, I saw it as working more harmoniously within the community.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Did you leave some, Shari? No. Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, uh, let's see. We need an update from the Board of Adjustments, Shari.
The Board heard one petition today from Turi and Maddie Beechey of Hazelton, Iowa, and the property owners out, out of Dover or in Saratoga Township, Craig and Joan Ferrier, regarding a variance to allow a building site on class-two soil type instead of the required class-four through class-eight soil types. This is 118 acres of land, and this family is moving, wants to move from, buy, move from Iowa, build a dwelling and agricultural buildings, and do a small organic dairy. And that variance was passed by the Board of Adjustment.
Okay, then we need the County Board update.
Sure. Both of our, our telecommunication tower, that was as recommended by the Planning Commission, and then the chains and done, Biggie petition was approved as recommended to allow the manufactured home in addition to.
Is there any other business that we need to conduct?
Move to adjourn.
Second. All right, Kelly moved to adjourn, and Patrick seconded it. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. The meeting is adjourned.